Good evening and welcome to the 1,152nd regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council and the City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Right here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magnos here.
Chairman Willschaw.
Is here.
And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. Again, we'll start with, we only have one agenda item to discuss tonight. We'll start with background information from our Planning Staff and then we'll go to the petitioner to give additional information and then if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item, they'll have that opportunity as well. So with that, we'll go to the miscellaneous items section of our agenda, item number one.
That is petition 2019-11-08-15 submitted by Hobbs &amp; Black Architect on behalf of 242 Community Church requesting approval of all plans required by Section 18.58 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number 543 as amended in connection with a proposal to renovate the exterior of the church located at 35475 Five Mile Road located on the south side of Five Mile Road between Yale and Levan on the northeast quarter, in the northeast quarter of Section 20.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you again. This is a request to renovate the exterior of an existing church building that is located on Five Mile between Yale and Levan. This is the 242 church. This property that is zoned R21 family residential and the changes to the building would only affect the north elevation, which is the side of the building facing Five Mile Road. This is an aerial photograph showing what the church looks like today. You'll see it contains mainly a brick as well as a stone on either side of the brick and a glass curtain wall. The next rendering shows what the changes would look like. They mostly involve adding new materials and colors in order to transform the appearance of the facade, which it would be consistent with the church's other locations throughout the metropolitan area. So these new materials include a combination of corrugated metal siding, reclaimed wood, as well as ephesus, which is the drive-in material. Probably the tallest and most prominent feature on the facade renovation would be the rectangular shaped wall that consists of corrugated metal that would be painted red and you can see that is where, it's on the west side of the glass curtain wall, contains the sign. This feature is about 25 feet in height overall and it would be installed in front of the glass on the west side of the facade. Immediately adjacent is a shorter section of wall that would be about 20 feet in height and this would be made of the ephesus material, would have a ferris finish in order to give it a rusted metal or oxidized steel appearance. There's a third detail about nine feet in height that would form a rectangular archway over the entrance on the north side of the building. This also consists of corrugated metal and as you can see from the rendering, it's painted with a blue finish. The existing brick on the east side of the glass would be covered with reclaimed wood siding and then lastly, the rendering shows that the stone walls that are located on either side of the entrance would be painted white. There are no other changes proposed to the structure. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence for this item.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Engineering Division and it's dated November 13th. It reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time. The existing parcel is assigned the address of 35475 Five Mile Road. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services, so it does not appear that there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that should a developer need to do any work within the Five Mile Road right-of-way, permits will be required from the Wayne County Department of Public Services." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from our Department of Public Safety Livonia Fire and Rescue dated November 19th and it reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to renovate the exterior front facade of the church on property located at the above referenced address. The Livonia Fire Department Fire Prevention Division has no objections to the project illustrated in petition 2019-11-815, 242 Community Church. Note, the Livonia Fire Department Fire Prevention Division agrees with the extension of fire sprinkler protection into the areas highlighted on Plan Sheet Number A050. This AHJ requires that all fire sprinkler applications have 24-hour fire alarm monitoring capable of calling emergency dispatch in the event of system activation. Assembly occupancies with document loads of more than 300 and all theaters with more than one audience viewing room shall be provided with an approved fire alarm system in accordance with 9613 of NFP 101 to 2015. Fire alarm systems required by this code shall be installed, tested, and maintained in accordance with the applicable requirements of NFPA 70 National Electric Code and NFPA 72 National Fire Alarm Signaling Code." Now, letter is signed by Greg Tarmus, City of Livonia Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety Division of Police. That letter is dated November 26th and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter of no objection dated November 27th from the Livonia Inspection Department, signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated November 13th and signed by Connie Kompila, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the City Treasurer dated November 14th and signed by Linda Sheel. And that is the extent of correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions for our Planning Staff? Mrs. Smiley?
Just a quick one. Do churches pay taxes?
In this case, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our Planning Staff? All right, with no other questions for our Planning Staff, I'll go to the petitioner who's here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
We usually ask that you start with your name and address, so we know who we're talking to.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Eric Rauch. I'm Executive Pastor at 242 Community Church. Address is 7526 Grand River, Brighton, Michigan, 48114. Thank you, Mr. Toramina, for your thorough overview. Appreciate that. And so I thought it'd be helpful for you guys to get a little bit of an overview of a bit of the history of what has been Memorial Christian Church for the last 77 years and really turning into 242 Community Church and maybe some understanding for that would be helpful for you guys. Memorial Christian Church started in 1945. They've been in Livonia and have a rich history here for 77 years and they've just done an incredible job of ministering in this city and in this community and have been a part of a great church here for a very long time. In August of 2018, they changed their name to Compass Christian Church, in part in an effort to help reach a bit of a younger audience. Their congregation was getting a bit older and they were trying some things to help reach a bit younger crowd. And so that happened just about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago. Fast forward then a few months after that, in February of this past year, and what they started experiencing was a transition at their, of their lead pastor. And at that point, the elders had a couple decisions to make. They could simply seek and find a new lead pastor, which is the most common route for churches in that style transition, or they could also do a less common route and that is choose to be adopted by another church that potentially is reaching a younger crowd and help breathe new life into a church that has a rich history. Our church, 242, has been around since 2005. In fact, one of the churches that helped us start was Memorial Christian Church. They gave us $50,000 in 2005, which we're very grateful for, and we launched our location that year in Brighton, Michigan. In Brighton, we were able to grow as a portable church and were able to launch a second location in Ann Arbor in 2009. In 2012, we took an old indoor tennis facility in the Brighton area that was vacant for the better part of seven years and turned it into a community center. That now sits at about 140,000 square feet, serves the community seven days a week and that church has grown pretty significantly. In fact, that church specifically was one of the fastest growing churches in the country for the last seven years. We also adopted the Ann Arbor location, built a community center there that opened just two years ago now, and it too has grown to be the largest church in the city of Ann Arbor. Those are the things that you could kind of read about when you do a Google search, but I think one of the interesting things about 242 is we don't just have large church locations, we also have smaller church locations in communities like Saginaw where we have a congregation of about 150 people, in communities like Monroe where we have a congregation of about 130 people, in Lansing, we adopted a church there four years ago and that church sits about 1,100 people. And then Taylor recently and where we have a church congregation of around 800 people. I share that because I think it's important to note that although we're one church, seven locations, we also have the full breadth of kind of size of, at each of these locations. It's not our interest to just become a big, huge church necessarily in each city or each community, we just kind of let naturally what happens, happen in those cities. If we're able to, you know, have a church that's thousands of people in a city and that's what we're called to be in that city, then we follow that calling. However, in some communities, that's not the case and we're completely comfortable being a bit of a smaller church and, you know, ministering in our capacity in the way that we're called in that community. Here in Livonia, we adopted Compass Christian Church in June. What that means is that the congregation voted to have 242 to now oversee Compass Christian Church and eventually change its name to 242 and to help be a part of establishing a culture and establishing a facility that can help reach a younger generation. And so that's what we're in the process of doing and part of that is our request here tonight to help update the front facade so it can speak to a bit of a younger audience than what that church has a history of. And so tonight, obviously, the change to the facade, as you see the difference, the juxtaposition between the old design and the new design is a part of that effort. We aren't proposing any additions at this time, we're not proposing any changes to the parking lot at this time. And in fact, our early indications as we look at the site is that if this church was to expand past 700, 800 people, that quite frankly, this probably wouldn't be the site for that. As we took a look at the studies for it, the seating capacity sits around 400 people. We'd run multiple services, but if there's maybe three services as an example, we just don't really see this specific location growing much past 800 people or accommodating more than that, at which point, you know, we'd look for other options in the city of Livonia. Our history has been one of taking old buildings that used to have a story and remodeling those, so taking old box stores as an example, or old tennis courts and revitalizing them into something new. But for tonight's efforts, what we're looking to do is just simply reimagine the whole front of this facade so that it fits in line more kind of with our identity and helps us continue to speak towards that young family audience that we seem to more naturally attract. And so that's our request tonight. I have here John Pern with Hobbs &amp; Black. He's our architect and he'll share a bit more of the details around the front facade. But when it comes to anything with operations or logistics or any questions about the church, I'd be happy to answer those for you, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your presentation. Do we have any questions for the church representative at this point before we get into the building design? Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Rauch, I appreciate your overview on church and that was very informative. Thank you. Just a couple of questions that I jotted down as you were speaking. Did I understand you used the phrase affordable church?
No, I did not.
Okay, I misunderstood, sorry.
He said portable.
Pardon me?
Portable, I'm sorry. Yeah, affordable church is where you would set up church every weekend in a auditorium like this, so yeah.
Gotcha.
That's our roots.
In your 140,000 square foot community center in Brighton, what kind of activities go on there and would they be the same kind of activities that you would anticipate happening here?
No, no, they would not be the same at all. This would be more of a weekend-centered facility, so a space that generally the large audience, the large population would meet here for Sunday services and so its peak hours, peak uses are absolutely that. We would anticipate a few things being able to happen there. Currently, there's been a co-op preschool that's a part of this facility and we'd like to continue to operate that as they've been doing. We'd also like to have a couple rooms set aside for instruction for guitar and art and so whether it's guitar or art classes or things like that, we like the idea of a school for the arts. We have in our research found that that might be a need in this city and in this community and so providing a place where the art community can come together and we have some, you know, smaller rooms available to do that, that's kind of an intriguing idea for us. And there's also a basketball court, a small basketball court inside. It's not used very often, but you know, we might be able to open that up, I suppose, to the public at large. But this is not a community center. This would be branded as 242 Community Church, would largely be presented for congregational use on the weekends and would not be a community center that has a seven-day-a-week function and feature. Our Brighton, when you asked that question, what do we have there? We have a cafe there, indoor soccer field, basketball courts, school for the arts there. But that's a whole other scope and we don't even brand them the same. That's called the 242 Community Center. That's a completely different like activity base and activity function as what we're looking to do here, which would be 242 Community Church. And quite frankly, I'm not even sure that this specific address is even appropriate for that. It's surrounded by residential, it's not in a commercial district and we're called to be good neighbors and we're just not, my indication here is that this wouldn't be an appropriate site for the style of activities that a community center would, that we'd like to have at it, so.
Thank you and I agree with you very much. You touched on another area of concern that we have and that is, this is embedded in a very traditional community location and the, I guess, rectilinear design of the church and the bright colors are not coincident with the surrounding residences and we have some concerns over that. And when your architect was at our study meeting last week, we expressed our concern in those regards and I don't know whether you've come tonight with some alternatives or some revisions or what you would say about that, but that was a, that was a large concern virus that was expressed during the study meeting last week.
Yeah, and I did hear that and, you know, certainly want to foster that conversation here tonight, so we haven't presented anything significantly different from what was shown to you guys a week ago. I would say this, that the materials are, with the exception of the red and the blue, the materials are soft materials. So you have the barn wood scape, you have the rusticated metal and things like that and they very much come off in soft tones, even though they're hardscape, you know, facades. They're very much, you know, soft in nature and, you know, our experience has been that we really like this combination of both the, kind of the soft tones that we get from the natural materials along with some of the other bolder looks on there too and so those two things are important to our identifiers as a church. And frankly, we like redeeming materials. Our whole goal, quite frankly, is to share the greatest redemption story of all time every single weekend and we feel like there's a nice subtle tie into taking materials that had a different story at one time and reusing them and having a new purpose to them. And so it's part of our thought process architecturally and part of the process we went through years ago when we're thinking about our identity as a church, is what are ways that we can take, you know, some of those things that are our core values as a church and even thinking through materials and things, what are some ways that we can implement that into those? And so that's, you know, part of what you see up here is a part of that thought process of taking reclaimed materials, things that had a different story at one time and redeeming them for a new story. And so whether it's the barn wood or the, you know, rusticated metal panels, a lot of glass, of course, which I glasses there today, yeah, those are, you know, things that help not just identify who we are, but also kind of start to hit at the core of what we do, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for Mr. Rauch? If not, we'll give your architect a chance to talk about the materials. Good evening, Mr. Pern.
David, it's Hobbs &amp; Black Architecture. Nice to see you again.
Good seeing you.
To touch base on the materials, I think we basically touched on almost all of them without necessarily going through list by list, but again, we have a corrugated metal panel on the siding. There's a, if you can see in the Ann Arbor facade up front, that's illustrated on the TV right now, there's a blue, it's kind of like a picture frame box that kind of was a branding element for them to kind of get a height from the streetscape. You can see we're trying to do that with that big 242 sign above, but that's on a red rusticated metal. We're again bringing that same material in, it's on all three campuses that we have done. There's barn wood shown on the Brighton campus. It's a nice soft material that we're going to clad the existing brick. It's clad right onto the brick, it's on furring, it's pretty easily install. Gives a nice, like kind of home, warm feel to it. On top of that, there's the Lansing campus where we've used that rusticated metal, kind of brings, tied to the old, it's a reclaimed material. It has that kind of feel. There's some of that blue corrugated metal to the side. Again, all we're trying to do here is really address that front facade and get a new, maybe up-and-coming family type clientele into the front. So when you're driving by, you see something new and exciting, it kind of brings people in. We're not anticipating doing anything around the corners or doing anything to the parking. Right now, it's just a facade change. We're including like a bench at the front of that curtain wall, but all that curtain wall is actually still remaining. We're just building out front of it, so we might have a little footing extension there, but we're talking about cold form metal framing with some sheathing and then the cladding on top of it. So nothing that's really intensive to the facade, nothing that's going to be puncturing that current like rain screen system or anything like that. The existing eaves are still going to remain, the existing roofline's still going to remain. We're not putting any additional square footage onto the building or any RTUs on top, behind, nothing like that. Everything else is going to remain for the most part. Aside from maybe painting the existing stone, that's about it. That's the total of the project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pern. I think we have a number of questions for you.
Sure.
We'll start with Mrs. McHugh. Work our way down the line.
I guess we'll just pick right up there with the painting of the stone.
Correct.
We discussed last week that some of us were not necessarily in favor of that. Did you discuss?
I understand. We spoke with 242 representatives. We haven't really come to a conclusion whether or not that was, now we show, we show that we're painting it, but if you look at it, it's more like a whitewash and that might be more in tune to what people are looking for. I don't think that was really something we were going to hang our hat on and say this is something we have to have and I'm not going to speak for you, but if that's something that's really holding up the process, then it could probably be something that we sacrifice.
Okay.
Yeah. They're excited to be here and to make, maybe like the formal changes to the facade rather than some of these nitpicky items, so I think we...
Is there a logic? I'm just a little confused because we're talking about, you know, all of the, you know, reusing a lot of materials and kind of, to then put paint on that is just a little, to me, a little counterintuitive. Maybe I'm just missing a message.
Well, I think it's reusing something but giving it new life. Yeah, some people go by and they see that existing stone and it's beautiful and it's not a material that's unlike we use now. We use natural stone all the time on projects. It's just giving it new life, a different life, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. Mrs. Smiley?
I'm on that same boat. I don't know how whitewashing natural stone gives it new life and does the blue mean something?
The blue, well, what we've done in the past is we've actually used an existing shipping container. That's where the proportions come from. It's approximately the same size and they've used these shipping containers on the inside of buildings to have maybe their free coffee, things like that. So it's a very welcoming thing where they're actually, it's an actual shipping container. This is kind of like an abstraction of that idea, that philosophy, and we're creating an entrance out of it. In the Brighton facility, there's a couple on the exterior that, one's kind of like a family entrance. It forms a slide, it goes down two stories. It's a fun thing, so we're kind of tying into that. Does that answer your question?
That's an answer, but I'm still lost on the blue. Because it's a shipping container and you want the church...
The blue's a very primary color. It's just, it's a color, I don't know if that's an actual representation of the actual blue. Metal panel comes in 1,000 colors, so...
So these are actual shipping containers that you put towards the entrance?
No, this is not. We've used them in the past.
Oh, okay.
This is just a corrugated metal to give that appearance.
Well, I'm still seeing this in a neighborhood and it's the whitewashing and the blue and the red, the, I mean, your name is, you know, I know you want to be something new and different and 242 after the X, that's a whole name because traditionally you find a church that's, you know, St. Mark's, St. Michael's, St. something, but in your like numbers and if you would have to really check it out like we did to find out that it's from the X. But I'm trying to get this, I'm trying to get this to fit in the neighborhood and I, in soft tones and I'm not seeing that going in the neighborhood and I'm not seeing soft tones and natural whitewashed stone doesn't look natural to me and I don't see that it gives it new life, but I'm not an architect either, so. All right, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions? Mr. Bonjero?
Just a couple of questions on, just, you know, the framing aspect. None of the glass changes?
No, some of the glass behind we might replace with like a Mapes panel, like an insulated metal panel. There's no reason to keep the actual glass panes in the back.
Yeah.
So we might re-glaze something into that existing curtain wall. The existing curtain wall we foresee being exactly intact. Now, the glass panels themselves may be removed, put in storage and replaced if we ever take down maybe those metal panels.
Okay, and then there's some brick vertical pillars.
There are. You can see that we're, the one on the left is a white. We're just cladding it, so...
They're cladding over the brick?
Those will be, yeah, remaining. We're not taking them down.
What happens with the brick planters?
The brick planters will be removed.
You're taking those out?
Yeah, they're actually a leaking hazard.
And the steeple comes down?
The steeple does come down, yes.
And no concrete works being done? You're salvaging existing concrete and...
No, the existing sidewalks, the existing driveway, nothing will be done. Depending on what we do when we excavate, there's probably a significant overpour there for the existing footings, just judging by what we've seen in prior church experiences that were built around this time. So we hope to just reuse that, but that's about it. So no flatwork.
So these panels are going to butt right up to the face of the building?
Yeah, we're talking about putting, yeah, if we have to extend a little footing, then that's it. We'll sit them on cold form metal framing that goes full height and we're talking like six-inch studs, so it won't stick out too much.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions? Our architect, Mr. Ventura.
Just a point of clarification. You described the blue on the front that comes from the shipping containers as being an entrance.
Right.
Is that going to be an entrance? Are people really going to enter the church there?
You know, it's funny because we do all this front facade work, but I would say the majority of people, this is, there's a half-moon drop-off here. I would say maybe 80, 90% of people will still come in through the side entrance, which is to the left around that corner. That's where all the parking is. Most people aren't going to come in through this entrance. It's more of a visual thing.
And you're not doing anything at the actual entrance?
We are not.
Okay.
No, not in this case.
And so when you say this is more of a visual thing, you're really advertising in effect with your architecture, the change in the purpose of the church or the identity of the church is kind of the bottom line?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for the architect? Anyone else? No? Okay. I think we have our questions answered at this point. We'll see if there's anyone else in the audience who wants to speak for or against this item. I don't see anybody jumping forward.
No.
Just watching? All right, great. Well, thank you for coming. Is there any other comments from the commission at this time? If not, I always like to give the petitioner the last word. Is there anything else, Mr. Roche, that you would like to add from what you've heard?
You know, I hear and understand the comments about the, you know, the design and the colors and its proximity to neighbors. And I can greatly appreciate that. And I just want to let you know that certainly our intention is to be a great neighbor here. To be an incredible neighbor, quite frankly. And, you know, architecturally speaking, you know, I know everyone's tastes are a bit different. We like this taste, quite frankly. You know, we won a State of Michigan Award for Architecture in 2012. We won a national award for architecture in 2013 for a new church. So nationally, we're recognized as the best new church facility. We've been featured in magazines and things. And so I know the tastes are different. But for us, it does speak a bit to who we see as our core audience, and that is young families. And so early on, we did a pretty significant study to find out what it is our audience likes to see. What is it that speaks to them? And so we were able to recognize our core audience as a thirty to thirty-five year old. And what are the things that speak to them so that, you know, there's clear messaging? Because what's interesting about what we do is our external feel and look needs to align with who we are and how we share the message inside. Because it's all communication from A to Z. And so what the architecture looks like also has to align with how we speak in social media, how we speak from the pulpit, the music we choose to play, all communication styles. And the reason it needs to align and match is because of what we do as a church. The number one reason why people don't go to church is because they believe it's hypocritical. And in part, they believe that because they see many churches try to speak out both sides of their mouth. They say they're young and hip and whatever, but they have an organ. They say they're, you know, like, that they care about the poor, but they really don't do anything about the poor. Right? And so generationally speaking, we are now probably two generations into a post-Christian world. And the number one reason why many people don't go to church is because they believe the church is hypocritical. And so for us, it's important to align our external identity with who we truly feel called to reach in the community. Because it creates a conversation and a communication piece that's consistent from A to Z. And so if we create an identity on the exterior that doesn't align with who we are, those things get perceived as misalignment and they get perceived as not authentic. In this day and age, people's authenticity radars are through the roof. Ten years ago, we were surrounded by about three hundred commercial images a day, and today, that number's over three thousand. People sniff out inauthenticity like that. And it's important for us to communicate consistently in all the ways that we communicate, including architecturally. And so part of our branding, part of our strategy is to make sure that we're very clear, very focused, very intentional in the ways that we communicate. And even consider architecture, which frankly is one of our most expensive communication tools. And make sure that we're considering that in the way that we communicate. So I wanted to share that with you guys. In our original Brighton building, with our first permanent facility, we spent a lot of time and energy, the better part of six months, really discerning through what we felt like would be the pattern of architecture for us moving forward and identifying who we are as a church, which means that we had to really identify who we're not either. And so when you look at this branding, if you will, I think you alluded to it. There's certainly a look and a feel to it, and it is intentional. And it does, you know, not match identical each location, but there's elements that are touched into each location. Each one's unique and different. And it is a part of us for making sure we have a consistent communication style across all the ways that we communicate in our cities, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roche. Any other comments from any commissioners? If not, Mr. Long, yeah.
Is it Pastor Roche?
Yeah.
Or Mr. Pastor Roche? Okay.
I go by Eric.
Eric? We'll be more formal than that. So we have a few options here. We can approve, we can deny.
Yeah.
Or we can table. And if we approve, it goes on to City Council with an approving resolution. If we deny, you can appeal to City Council.
Correct.
And, Miss Lani, send them. And if we table, then we can sit and go back and forth over this. I know that some of my fellow commissioners obviously don't have certain problems with some of the architecture or some of the colors.
Yeah.
But it also sounds like you're kind of firm on this is who we are. And so I'm not much of a one for wasting time.
Yeah, of course.
And so we'll make our decision based on whatever the commission wants to decide here. But, I mean, do you feel like you have negotiating room on your color scheme or are we...
Yeah, everything's a conversation, and that's how I perceive tonight, to be quite frankly. And I appreciate that and, you know, totally understand. I said as vice chair in my local planning commission, so I totally understand, you know, your guys' needs and desires here. Wanted to state our case. But this is absolutely an open conversation to have tonight and, yeah.
Just wanted to find that out because, again, well, it's not, I don't want to waste time if you guys are set on this and...
I would seek to...
Then we could move it over, and if the commission denied it, then obviously you have the right to appeal, but if...
I would seek to go to City Council only with the approval of this body. I don't think it's wise to go to City Council without the support of this body.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Toramina.
With that, consideration to table, we'd be happy to work with the applicant on revisions to the plans. But I'm wondering, any advice we could obtain this evening relative to the design of the facade? The shapes and the geometry, if you will, of what's presented versus the colors? I know Commissioner Long indicated the colors and the paint on the stone is obviously an issue. I'm thinking that the red, as it's presented on the material sample board, might be more of a commercial expression on this building that is a little, maybe at odds a little bit with the residential character of the neighborhood. So I'm wondering if looking at that, that particular red on the building might be something that we could look at. Because it was indicated at the study session that it didn't really reflect, at least the rendering, as well as some of the photographs with the sample that was provided. So maybe if there's some flexibility on the, on the actual red color without really compromising the design. I'm wondering, because the red seems to carry over not only on that tall feature on the building, but also on the eaves along the building. Maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roche or the architect, but just, again, some possible direction here if we're going to table this.
I think you mentioned a couple of good things. First off, the whitewash on the stone, that's a, you know, agreeable thing for us, of course. We would, you know, be happy to leave that stone as is or even just maybe even selectively. There's a few stones in that mixture, if I'm not mistaken, that just kind of like stick out a bit darker than other ones. And so it's not so much the whole facade of that, but like a few of those stones that just kind of seem out of place. That would be kind of nice for us to mute a bit. I hear what you're saying about the eaves, and I think that's an easy one, too. A darker eve color, a dark gray or pewter even, would be probably a nice addressing of that. And I wonder if a deeper red, you know, we're not tied into like this specific red per se. We're not some corporate fast food restaurant who've got, you know, our Pantones for that color, if you will. But I wonder if a deeper red would have more of a residential feel. And then I think we could also take a look at that blue, too, which stands out, too, quite a bit. And offer some, you know, at a, with staff, you know, kind of take a look at some renderings for colors, give some options out and, you know, come back with thoughts on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roche. Yeah, I think this is an opportunity, given the discussion as to where this is probably headed, this would be a good opportunity for any commissioners who do want to offer any suggestions to our planning staff in terms of things to look toward. This would be a good opportunity to do that now so that at least going into the next few weeks, we'll have an opportunity to have that discussion and focus on those elements. So if there's any comments from the commission regarding that, that'd be appropriate, Mrs. McHugh.
I think I had mentioned this last week, but to me, that color in that render is not the same color that you have on that board. It just, it's more of a burgundy to me or a softer red, which to me would be much more appealing.
Yeah.
I think it's the primary color thing that is so, it's just so bold, if we could soften that up a little bit.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Any other comments, Mr. Bonjero?
I agree with Mrs. McHugh about that red there just looks different than the other photos. And the blue just kind of hits you, you know what I mean? And that's just my feeling. I don't really have a problem with the other colors as much as the blue. It's just kind of on there, you know what I mean? But that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair Magna.
I agree. The blue troubles me more than the red. And the tone of the red was, is, you know, is negotiable, I guess. The blue troubles me a little bit and, as well as the stone being painted. But I also thought maybe there's room for some more of that barn wood. The barn wood is attractive, it does look good. Maybe there's some room for some more barn wood in front of that stone, in place of some of that stone. Maybe, that's my opinion, would set off a little touch here.
Good comment. Mrs. Smiley?
I would, I would agree with Mr. Bonjero and Mr. Chair Magna about the blue. I, well, you know, like, when we had a preschool and stuff like that, some of the things they brought were primary colors to attract the children. And we were not too positive. This is right at a neighborhood across from the, more neighborhood, so, yeah, I'm not a fan of the blue at all. And I, but I, if it's a message, I'm not getting it.
Some of us are always children, Mrs. Smiley. Any other comments, Mr. Ventura?
I completely agree with all of my commissioners, my fellow commissioners here. And one of the words I think that you used, Mr. Roche, was soft colors. And obviously, we don't perceive these as being soft colors. I have a great deal of respect for Hobbs and Black. And in my, in my job, I've interfaced with them many times, and they're a very capable architectural firm. And I'm sure that with your guidance, and I understand the statement that you're trying to make here and the differentiation that you're trying to express both philosophically and from a change of orientation standpoint. But to truly do something that reflected soft, okay, I think would require a change in the colors to something far more muted than those appear to be to us. And as far as the rectilinear shapes go, I could probably live with them, but, you know, Hobbs and Black is a very creative group, and I'm sure they can come up with something that fulfills your wishes to look different and to express your new identity and is a little more harmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura.
Do you mind if I speak to that for one second?
You're welcome to.
Thank you. I'd prefer to keep what we see up here for the design of the shape. We've gone through about nine to ten iterations of this. And one of our components here is that, one of the reasons we lean on this is we like, from a geographic standpoint, like the geometry of this. But also affordability-wise, these are appendages onto existing things that don't require any foundations and such. And so that was one of the things that led us to this as well. It keeps intact the structural components that are there and frankly, you know, makes it much more affordable for us. And so I'd prefer to keep the geometry like we're showing tonight. And I'm hearing a lot of response about the blue. I think that's a color we can absolutely come in and change and even provide some options, too, so we have several options to that. I think the red could be much deeper and, you know, more residential feeling. And so I think that would be a good contrast there, too. Soft tones wise, I wasn't really referring to the colors, more so the materials of the barn wood and even the rusticated metal. But I agree with what you guys are saying. I think that we can mute those a bit more and mute the red a lot more, update the color of the blue, not make it as, you know, out there and help be more harmonious in the community and the neighborhood that's adjacent to it, so.
All right, thank you. And, you know, I try to not give too many of my own comments as chairman, but I will just say that I appreciate you working with us. I think that we'll be able to work together going forward to hopefully come up with a good solution for your facility. And I appreciate the fact that you are willing to work with us and to seek that approval. So if anything, the only comment I would say, this might be a little bit different than what you've heard so far tonight, is I almost wish that, and I know it's a financing thing for you guys, but some of those elements would come around to those, to the main entrance, if you want to call it that, on the side, to just tie it together, to keep that look that you're going for kind of consistent.
Yeah, and, you know, we hope the future is bright for us here in this community. We love this city. It's got such a great history here. And, you know, we're new to it as a church, but, boy, we'd love to, thirty years from now, forty years from now, you know, think back on this and, you know, hope that we can really be a big part of doing positive things in this city. That's our goal, that's our hope, and we certainly want to always be on the right foot with you guys on that, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Roche. With that, I will close the discussion if there's nothing else and look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm going to offer a resolution that this be placed on the table for Mr. Roche and Hobbs and Black to work with the Planning Department, Mr. Toramina and company, to revise the colors and the whole overall impression of church and perhaps some of the materials, so I can come back to it at a future date.
Okay.
Further consideration.
All right, so we have a motion to table to a future date, would be in January at this point?
First meeting in January should be.
That'll give us a few weeks to work together.
If we could ask the petitioner.
Mr. Roche, we're looking to possibly table to the first week in January.
Okay.
Give you a few weeks to work together with our planning department. Would that be a good date for you? It'd be Tuesday.
It'd be Tuesday.
Seventh is the study meeting and the fourteenth is the voting meeting.
So, January seventh and fourteenth?
Those both work for me. Yeah, I'll be in town.
Okay, all right. So we're looking to table to those dates. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
We have a motion made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero. There is no discussion on tabling motions. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chair Walsh.
Votes aye. Motion passes. Item has been tabled, and thank you for coming tonight. And we will look to continue this discussion in January. That takes us to the pending items section of our agenda. We have one item more, Mr. Secretary.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the 1,151st Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I believe all members are present. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by... Did I get Mrs. McHugh on that? All right. It was a symphony over there.
It's written down, you got her.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McHugh. If there's no objection, we can show seven to approve that. I hear no objections, so we'll show that as being a... I hear no objections, so we'll show that as being approved. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission? See, none. Is there a... Well, before I do that, I do want to bring one just item. This is our last meeting of the year. We've had a really good year, very busy year with a lot of activity. I would like to personally thank my colleagues on the commission for the work that they've done this past year. We all work very hard. We're here almost every week for the entire year. It's a big commitment and we've done very well, so I want to thank them. I also want to thank our planning staff, Mr. Tormina, Ms. Reese, and of course, all the other people in the planning department who work tirelessly to get these packets together and to bring all this information to us. I really appreciate that. And of course, our Livonia Television staff who bring the meetings to the community every week as well, so... So I want to thank everyone. I certainly want to wish our community and all of you a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and a very good New Year, so...
I'll second that. I'll support that.
Well, we have support for that. All right, if there's no other comments, I would look to a motion, look for a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
We have a motion by Mrs. Smiley, supported by...
Support.
Mrs. McHugh. So we have a motion adjourned by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Again, if there's no objection, I think the chair will show seven on that. And that takes us to the end of our meeting. Again, I just wanted to thank the community and Livonia Television for bringing this particular meeting to the community. And with no further business, we will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-two PM. Good evening, Livonia.